Good afternoon, everyone, and welcome to the Harlingen City Commission meeting. The time is now 5:33 PM. Thank you for joining us. We do have a quorum as we have all commissioners in attendance, and I believe Commissioner Perez is making his way into the room here in a few minutes. And it has been duly posted as required by state law at this time. I'll ask everyone to please rise as Commissioner Kinsley leads us in our invocation.
Lord, thank you for the opportunity to serve the people of our city. Help us to act with character and conviction. Help us to listen with understanding and goodwill. Give us a spirit of service. Remind us that we are stewards of your authority. Please guide us so that this meeting will be productive. Let us be effective and decisive. We ask these things as your sons and daughters, confident in your goodness and love. Amen.
Amen.
Conflict of allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mark? Mark, if you'd read the conflict of interest?
Yes, Mayor. Under state law, a conflict of interest exists if a commission member or certain members of that person's family has a qualifying financial interest in an agenda item. Members with a conflict of interest cannot participate in the discussion nor vote on the agenda item. Are there any known conflicts of interest to disclose at this time?
None.
Ten E.
None?
None.
None.
All right.
No.
All right. Moving on.
Item number three, announcements. With respect to items not listed elsewhere on this agenda, the City Commission may report on items of community interest, including announcing community events, announcing employee or community recognitions. Item 3A, mayor's announcements.
Just want to remind everybody that we have a lot going on. We have the Christmas parade coming. We also have the lighting of the Arroyo for tomorrow. Is that right?
Yes, Mayor.
Tomorrow evening. We also have, I saw Javier, I believe, Segura here, or maybe I dream that he was here. We have the lighting of the Christmas tree at the convention center, which I believe is on the 13th. And all that information should be available on the City of Harlingen website. And I know I saw Jeff here, and I want to congratulate Jeff on all of the incredible work over at the golf course and the ribbon cutting and the tournament, which I hear was great, and that Gabe did phenomenal, is what I...
No, no, I don't know where you heard that from, but...
Well, we can all pretend. But thank you for all of your hard work, and obviously to the board and to this commission for supporting that endeavor. That's all I have.
Item 3B, city manager's announcements.
Mayor, on the Aurora lighting, the event is to go forward, but we're not going to have parking in the ravine area because of the water saturation that we've had over the past few days. It is dry enough to have the event, but we'll have to find parking elsewhere along the street and along the park, the street right in front of the Old Valley Morning Star. And just in case anybody missed the score, it was seventeen to seven. That's all I have.
Item 3C, city commissioner members' announcements.
Early voting's going on, so if you know somebody for districts 3, 4, and 5 that should get out there and vote, make sure you prompt them to do so.
None. In echoing Commissioner Kinsley, the times are from nine to seven on early voting. Saturday is from ten to five. Sunday, we'll all have a day of rest. Monday and Tuesday is from ten, no, from nine to five, nine to five, not ten. Nine to five. And Election Day is on the fourteenth.
Yes, sir.
That's it.
Seventy-seven. Bishop Perez?
Yes. Again, I'm just echoing what Ford and Frank said about their early voting. As of right now, we are in a runoff, so runoffs tend to have low voter turnout. I don't have the results for today, but as of yesterday, in the entire city of districts 3, 4, and 5, only 270 people have voted. I know Harlingen, we broke records this past election. It was amazing what all the residents of Harlingen did when they went out and voted. So I'm encouraging people to go out there and go vote again. As I've been talking to people, there's been some misconceptions about the runoff. One of the misconceptions that I've had, or that people have asked, have told me that if they voted in the regular election, they don't have to vote again. That's incorrect. If you've, this runoff election's for districts 3, 4, and 5. It's a brand-new election. Your votes in the first election do not carry over, so everybody starts at zero. So it's not only should you vote in the runoff if you voted in the November election, but you must vote in the runoff election because it's your voice. Our city, the direction of our cities will be determined by what the people of Harlingen decide, and the best decisions that Harlingen makes is when the most people go out there and vote. So I encourage everybody to go out there and vote. And just like Frank said, it's going on till the 10th of this month, and Election Day is December 14th. Thank you.
Item number four, Mayor. Proclamations and presentation of awards for a Harlingen animal shelter Pet of the Week.
And I did see our Pet of the Week.
Good evening, Mayor and City Commission. Tonight, we have brought Mr. Cinnamon. Lately, it seems like we've been bringing females, but this is Mr. Cinnamon. He's about three months old. He's not had his rabies vaccine yet, but he will be getting it very soon. He is fully vaccinated. He has been at the shelter since October 9th, so he's been with us for quite a while, but he is looking for his forever home. I'm happy to report that our streak is still intact. Ms. Bridget from the last meeting has been adopted, and we hope to continue this streak as long as we can. But this is Mr. Cinnamon. I also want to let everybody know that this Saturday, we will be at Market Days with animals for adoption and at Pet Co. At Pet Co. In Weslaco with animals for adoption. Anybody interested in cinnamon or any of the other animals are welcome to call the animal shelter at 956-216-5250.
And Pet Co. is what date, Angela?
Saturday.
Oh, it's Saturday.
So they'll be at two different locations, as well as onsite on Saturday.
And this is cinnamon.
This is cinnamon.
Cinnamon has two siblings.
I saw that.
Salt and sugar.
What? Not sugar and spice?
Yeah. Spice got enough.
Oh, great. Oh, good. And freakin'.
Maybe she was spicy.
Yeah.
All right. Well, thank you. Thank you, Beau. Thank you for all your hard work. I know that you, we had the microchip clinic that went well, adoptions. Each event, you're adopting out animals, so that's good. We'd like more, but we are, we're happy with all the work that y'all are doing, so thank you so much.
Thank you.
Item number 4B, proclamation. Dick Office Supplies over forty-five years of service to the community.
Good evening, everyone. I hope everybody had a great holiday. Thank you so much for being here. Our first proclamation will be honoring Dick Office Supply for over forty-five years of service to our community, and I will read the proclamation as follows. Whereas Dick Office Supply has been the cornerstone of Harlingen community since its establishment in 1980, providing exceptional office supplies and service to educators, local businesses, and residents, and where under the ownership of Mr. Dale Winter and Mr. Peter Dick with the steadfast leadership of Ms. Wendy Dick, the store has built a reputation for outstanding customer service, commitment to quality, and dedication to meeting the needs of our community. And whereas the store has persevered over four decades, outlasting larger competitors such as Office Max and Office Depot while maintaining its hallmark of personalized, customer-focused care, and whereas Dick Office Supply has employed a team of six exemplary staff members who have consistently demonstrated professionalism, dedication, and top-notch service to all who entered their doors. Whereas the time has come to bid farewell to this beloved institution as the owners and staff celebrate their well-deserved retirement marking the end of an era for Harlingen, and whereas the City of Harlingen recognizes the invaluable contributions of Dick Office Supply to growth and prosperity of our community and expresses their heartfelt gratitude for their years of service. Now therefore, I, Norma Supulvila, Mayor of Harlingen, Texas, do hereby proclaim December 4th of 2024 as Dick Office Supply Appreciation Day in the City of Harlingen and urge all citizens to join in honoring those, honoring the owner's leadership and staff for their remarkable dedication and service. And to accept this proclamation, I would like to invite Ms. Wendy, who is here with us today, to say a few words.
You expect me to say something? Well, in a few words, of course, we appreciate very much the recognition and want to thank the entire community of Harlingen and for the forty-five years of customer support that we've experienced. It is the only reason that we could maintain for forty-five years and regret that the era is coming to an end and had to close our doors. So thank you again so much for your kind words and the appreciation we've been shown here.
So if you want to just stay right there, I don't know if any, I know that we have a presentation of some flowers for you, Ms. Wendy. And yes, and I just want to say before we do that, and you know, I think that everyone in the City of Harlingen knows of Dick Office Supply. You know, years and years ago, I won't even tell you when, but before I was a lawyer, before I was here on the commission, I was a teacher at Austin Elementary School, and I will tell you that every single poster, every project involved a trip to Dick Office Supply. And even now, you know, in my practice, I was telling Gabe earlier today that you sell these little tiny tabs for my exhibits, for my trial exhibits, that I can't find anywhere else, and so I usually go and I'll buy all that you have. You probably don't know this, but I do that, and I am.
She's a hoarder.
I stock up, and so I just go in and out, you know, like Batman. I'll get my stuff and leave. But you know, it is, it's one of those places that you really just try to support as a community, and I know that I had gotten a lot of messages and reached out to EDC to say, hey, what is going on? We want to know, how can we support you? And then we learned that you were retiring, which you deserve, you deserve. And I just want to say, you know, on behalf of myself, my family, the City of Harlingen, City Commission, we really, really value you, appreciate your family and everything that you've done for the community. I think that there's going to be a, how can I say this, just a missing part of our community, especially for teachers and for folks that refuse to shop online, and there's a lot of us out there when it comes to those types of supplies. And so we wish you well on your retirement, and you will be greatly missed.
I keep hoping that someone will recognize the gap, and someone younger than I am, with more energy than I have at this point in my life, will recognize the gap and say, oh, I've always wanted to open a business. Let's go do that.
You know, and that may, that may be the case, and we hope so, and we hope there's an entrepreneur out there that understands, just like, you know, there's, there is a feeling of reading a book, an actual book. You know, we've got all these devices, but being able to read a book and have it on your nightstand, and that is something that I think we all still truly value and appreciate. It's the same thing as walking into your establishment, so we appreciate you.
Thank you so much for the kind words.
I don't know if anyone else has anything for Ms. Wendy?
Yeah, I just spent money there earlier in the year.
Thank you so much for that.
Obviously, it wasn't enough.
Let's, if we can take a photo.
Everything in my classroom and in my wife's classroom is, was laminated at your place. When my wife found out that you guys were closing, she was devastated. She's like, what am I going to do next year?
There is someone who purchased the laminators and is going to be doing laminating.
Oh.
So there is a business in Harlingen, and I'm sorry, I don't recall the name of their business at the moment, but they are in Harlingen and they are going to be doing the laminating.
Okay. I'll let her know.
Just looking for them.
All right. Where do you want us, Kalissa? We're in a different space today, so...
We can try to get maybe just in a straight line and have a little...
Okay.
Wherever you want. Yes, absolutely.
I mean, I'm wearing a white shirt, and I'm going to stand up in this.
Forty-five years. We're still... We're moving in front of the door. I'm going to move.
My commission.
So we'll probably, okay. I have to make sure we're... I can have this. There. Okay. We need to kind of be... I don't know where y'all are. I'm going to sit there and do a frame. Okay. Yes. And then we'll take one, and then we'll see how it looks. If not, we'll... Okay, ready? One, two, and three. Checking it. That's perfect. Okay, let's take a few more just to be sure. Ready? One, two, and three. Ready? One, two, and three. Ready? One, two, and...
Thanks so much.
Also, I just wanted to say something.
I just wanted to say something. My name's Dale Winter. I own Dick Office Supply, and Wendy is my general manager. Big boss. And we started Dick Office Supply, the grand opening day was January 21st of 19. And we built it in seventy-nine. And Peter Dick was a partner in that time. He gave me the chance as a twenty-four-year-old kid to get into business, and that was about how I wanted to do something. And I did. And I started Harlingen, Texas. Wendy was my right-hand lady. I learned the business. She was a new and great from Canada, came down here forty-five years ago, and likes our Texas. And it's been a great, it's been a great endeavor and stuff. But I am not the one retiring. She is retiring. I am still in McAllen. I live at Animal Country Club, but I do sell furniture, a lot of franchises in nineteen-ninety-seven, and that's when I moved basically away from Harlingen and moved to McAllen because that's where the furniture was. But I had just recently done at that time, the Harlingen Public Library for y'all, when you built that, and one of my good friends in college was a guy by the name of Mike Pettis, who ended up being your city manager, and then he ended up going to McAllen, being their city manager, and he's still a friend to this day. So, and I want to thank you for all the great memories in Harlingen. It's been a wonderful time. Thank you.
Item number five, citizens' communication.
At this time, the public is invited to address the city commission and speak on any matter not specifically listed for public hearing elsewhere in this agenda. Please note that the city commission members may not respond to comments or deliberate on topics addressed. We have two today, Mayor, Mr. Raymond Reyes regarding improvements, I believe, and then we have Mr. Ron Lozano regarding Texas.
Raymond Reyes, seven zero six, nine, Texas. I think it's small enough. So basically, as usual, it's always a work in progress. Like the mayor stated, there's a lot of things going on. Just got to try to stay on track. I know there's a lot of construction stuff going on, and that, to me, has been a little bit concerning because some of it is going on on Seventh Street, right where I live out there. And I don't know, the project started, and then they stopped for like three weeks, and there's barrels all over the place, and you know, some of them got knocked off, and then I called, and when they got pulled from that project to go do another project, and then there's something else going on on Austin Street. There's a big indention. I mean, I went by there earlier, but you know, if I, I'm bottoming now on my cars. I just switched to my truck because, you know, I've already experienced one thing where I hit one of those things and ruined one of my wheels. So I think that as we're doing projects of improvement, we need to go ahead and make sure that we think outside of the box, as they do in the military sometimes, and try to anticipate what issues are we going to have. I know Oscar, I believe is his name, is out there on the ball trying to do what he does. That's just one person, you know? Whenever we start having these budget meetings and stuff like that, since we're obviously growing, because I see a lot of construction going on, which is a good thing, if they need assistance or additional personnel, we need to make sure we budget that and they're able to control the growth and make sure, you know, things are addressed correctly. That's just a fly-by-night type of deal because we want to keep going forward without causing a burden to the citizens or minimize the burden, I should say, would be correct. And other than that, hopefully, you know, the, I'll be so happy when the elections start completely over. But I think we're going to get where we need to be. Just takes a little bit of time, like anything else, and I think that's all I have. Maybe next time, get a bigger room because some of us were confused of where exactly to go, but I sorted it out. I made it. So thank you very much for your time. Y'all have a good evening and keep doing what you do, just like I do. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes.
Next one is Mr. Ron Lozano, Texas.
It was so refreshing to hear the term decisive, because voting is underway now as we speak. So unless nefarious things are afoot, results should not be known at this hour, since there still is over an hour of voting this very day. Now, trying to avoid a dissertation, it's Christmas, we cannot fail to realize those whom I presently address are and should be held to a higher standard than our city employees. Looking at the campaign finance reports, we note Brandon Castellanos double-dipping in the public trough. He's paid handsomely by the city for unnecessary propaganda work on y'all's behalf. But that's not much toil, so he does political propaganda for at least one of you now, of which there's an acknowledgement. So even if Mr. Castellanos may not understand that his employment by Perez leaves at a minimum an appearance of impropriety, Mr. Perez must know better. He's already indicated he's a teacher this very meeting. Yet, look at Mesmar and the rest of you, except Mr. Morales, who have no idea that a tax bill is the same as a tax levy. Alleged twenty-seven years of our tax rate can be relegated to perdition because for Harlingen property owners, your constant bragging is meaningless. Former Clinton operative, it's the levy, stupid. People pay the bill, not your illusionary rate. Transparency, as usual, is dark. For all that touting, for months, for over a year, an November-autumn election, tonight, we knew ahead of time, we made wagers, she would not spring it up of our general election, currently means nothing to our mayor. So go out and vote if you believe in a democracy. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Lozano.
You're welcome.
That's it, Mayor, for citizens' communication. Next item is the approval of maintenance, regular meeting of October 21st, 2024.
Motion to approve. There was a minor correction on the appointments that I got with Ms. Lozano, who is being addressed.
Okay.
So I second the motion with the minor adjustment.
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries. Mayor, you forward.
Yes, ma'am. Number seven, consent agenda. No discussion is anticipated on any of the items in this section because they are routine business or included in the budget adoption process or have been previously discussed as a staff report or discussion item. These items will be considered collectively by a single vote unless a commission member requests an item to be removed from the consent agenda. Item A, consideration of possible action to a...
Thank you, Amanda. Are there any of the items that need to be removed from consent?
No, make a motion to approve all the consent items.
Is there a second?
Second?
All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Pose. Motion carries.
Thank you.
Okay, moving on.
Yes, ten.
Okay, staff's reports and other discussions. Item in these sections are not expected to require action by the city commission and are generally for information only. However, any item listed in this section may become an action item at a future meeting with the request of the mayor or after the request of any two commission members or city manager. A, city manager's report.
I just would like to have the commission check their calendars for December 12th at 5:30 for a joint meeting with the airport to make sure you're available. It'll be at the airport, and then on December the 11th, the day before, here at the museum again, for a meeting, a presentation by the Texas Historical Commission on the CLG program. That'll be at 5:30. So if you could please check your schedules to make sure you're available?
I'm good with both.
Okay, good.
You too.
That's all I have.
Staff reports.
There are none.
None, okay. C, presentation by Jeff Hart, golf director, regarding renovations to Tony Butler Golf Course, holds one through eighteen.
Thank y'all. As you can see on the presentation right here, I've got a picture. We're open, but we're not at the finish line by any means. The good thing is I'm not going to ask you for more money, but we just need a lot more labor going into the course. We did not open the course too early. I've heard, I've read that online, people think that. It's not. We wouldn't have hurt anything by keeping it closed. It wouldn't have helped the greens. They just need to mature. They just need to grow, and it's going to, it happens. It's going to be a time. And spring, we ought to see a lot of difference in the way the course is going. The greens are just fine. They're rolling well. I don't know if y'all played it yet. The city manager, he played it. They got four plays taken there, I believe, so they did win some.
I think he did great.
No, he didn't. We came fourth.
On this picture, as you can see, I just want to point out, this first, the first water right here is really kind of a muddy color. We could not dye that because that's what we water out of. If you look at the other ponds up farther up in the top left, they're all dyed blue. So we dyed those, we don't water that, so they look really pretty. We can't really dye this one here because they're going to be watered out at all the time, and it's wasted dye. But you can see too, also in this small area, the new fountain we have right here, this will help, not only for looks, but it's going to help aerate the water and will help cut down their algae growth and stuff in there. We got two, we got one there, one on fifteen.
Jeff, I will say though, that the course did get a lot harder.
It's much longer, and that's what the people wanted, that we said it was too easy of a course.
Before...
We wanted a championship course. We've got a championship course. Now, it's a difficult course, but we also have multiple teeing areas, so if you want to play the blacks, you're going to be playing a very top-notch, hard course. If you want to move up and play the yellows and the whites, then you're playing a much shorter distance. So there's teeing grounds for all areas of skill level. So we go to the next picture. This is a drone picture that took, this has the holes, you know, ten, eleven, twelve, nine, eighteen, just, this shows a picture of what it looks like now. You can see that the green is in the, in the fairways. If there's any yellowing part, that's outside on the tree lines. We did not water that. There's not a reason to water that. That's rough. It's supposed to be bad. It's not supposed to be good for them to head up. It's supposed to be a penalty. The next picture, this is where we start off on hole number one renovation. What slowed the renovation down? They were supposed to plant in April. Their hydro seed are broke. They're waiting on part, and then they kept saying it's too windy to see because the seed is very, very small. I told them multiple times, if they're going to wait for a day that's calm in spring here, it's not going to happen. They finally realized that, that they can plant when it's ten molar winds, because they were not doing that. So they finally end up planting, finishing planting in mid-June, when they were supposed to be mid-April is when it's supposed to be done. This pushed back some of the opening time. This was the five-point-five meter project that included the golf course, the irrigation system, and this is hole ten, ten renovation. This is what it looked like before and what it looked like, what it looks like now. This is from a slightly different angle, but it's still, that was originally ten green, and that's what the angle is. So it's a much prettier course to look at too. And aesthetics mean a lot in the golf course when you're... Just, this shows a picture of what it looks like now. You can see that the green is in the, in the fairways. If there's any yellowing part, that's imp outside of the tree lines. We did not water that. There's not really a reason to water that. That's rough. It's supposed to be bad. It's not supposed to be good for them to hit up. It's supposed to be a penalty. The next picture, this is where we start off on hole number one renovation. What slowed the renovation down, they were supposed to plant in April. Their hydroseeder broke. They're waiting on part. And then they kept saying it's too windy to seed because the seed is very, very small. I told them multiple times, if they're gonna wait for a day that's calm in spring here, it's not gonna happen. They finally realized that, that they can plant when it's ten miler winds, because they were not doing that. So they finally end up planting, finishing planting in mid-June, when they were supposed to be mid-April is when it's supposed to be done. This pushed back some of the opening time. This was the five-mi- five-point-five-mid yard project that included the golf course, the irrigation system, and, oh, Lord. This is hole ten, ten renovation. This is what it looked like before and what it looked like to, what it looks like now. This is from a slightly different angle, but it's still, that's, that was originally ten green, and that's what the angle is. So it's a much prettier course to look at too. And aesthetics mean a lot in the golf course, when, when, as far as the value of why people would wanna come and play it. This is hydroseeding that they did on this, this is on thirteen green, and you can see, I don't have a picture real close up, but hydroseeding to the left. This is what the city recently purchased to the Parks Department, a hydroseeder, so they can hydroseed. It mixes, what they did was they seeded over, they seeded it first, and then they came and did a hydroseed, which is a little bit of a, it's a paper-water mixture that holds the seed down better, keeps moisture into, so that it can germinate quicker. So the city of Harlingen now has that. We barred their hydroseeder because we had a lot of rain back September, early October, and it was washing out our areas. So what we did, we got a really woody hulk and hydroseeded the city's, um, hydroseeder and really tacked down that sand and, and the seed down that we needed to reseed. And that's what we did with the city hydroseeder that we applied. It worked out well, and it took, it did. This is the pump station. One of the left is what we had and was a well taken care of. There was only one pump. There's three pumps, sixty horsepower pumps. You can only see one, two, and three in the back. Only the third one worked. Now, this is the new pump station. It's got, it's got three sixty horsepower pumps and a five horsepower jockey pump on it. The jockey pump keeps the pressure on the line at all times, so that when you turn on, it automatically comes up. So this is a state-of-the-art pump system. Um, we're gonna take very good care of it. It shouldn't last thirty, forty years.
Can you just talk briefly about how you can control it from your phone?
Yes, it, it has the option of a tablet or a phone to, you can, you can pull it up and, and turn one specific head on. You can poke it on each head individually to water. What we're finding is we have some spots that are a little wetter than others, and we're gonna have to go through and, and really program our system to fit our golf course. What's wet, we need to cut back on water on that sprinkler head. What's dry, we need to turn up on the sprinkler heads, and it's still a process that we're trying to get involved into. But this'll, this enables us to set each individual sprinkler head at a different rate. Instead of just turning the water on, all sprinklers come on, and everybody, everything goes at the same time. It's different with this. It's a better system. This is our actual putting green right here on, on, um, right beside the clubhouse. This is the past farm grass that we did. This was a three-hundred-thousand-dollar increase on what the architect wanted to do. He wanted to do Champions Bermuda, which we had before. Champions Bermuda is not salt tolerant. Our water is not specifically salt tolerant, but, I mean, salty. But it does have a high pH, about eight-point-three, and it does have a lot of bicarbonate in it, which makes it poor quality water, what we water up, which is canal water. This grass is supposed to thrive in poor water conditions, and so far, it's done now. So this is gonna help us. We don't have to treat our water so much, and we still have a good turf. And we are the only one that have a complete eighteen-hole course with the past pal. You're gonna see lots of courses do it. Rancho Vino is, is converting over. I'm not sure exactly how many holes they have, but they've been converting over. The reason why it's taking, the, the cost of doing the whole eighteen is, you know, ours was three-hundred-thousand-dollar upgrade on them. So we're probably looking at five-hundred-thousand dollars to, to convert a course over. So we have the first one in the valley. You'll see more in the valley in the next, you know, ten, fifteen years. This is the Yomo cards. We've been over that, the wild cards there. That's, they're our brand-new cards. Um, our system is in, but the, the kill switch is not ready yet. They had a box that they sent that was, all the boxes were delivered to Ewing and Brown Silver some reason. Had something to do with Mid-America. One of the boxes lost. We're reshipping that box. They're gonna install it, and then we'll have the actual geofencing that stops the cars from going in. Right now, we can see on the court computer screen, we can see where every card, card is on the course. If it's green, it means that the cars are going, they're on time. If it's, um, red, it means they're behind time, but they're not holding up anybody. And, and so they're not really causing issue. If they're purple, it means that they're actually behind time and holding people up. So that's when we would send our marsh up to the purple cards and say, y'all gotta pick up the pace or let some field through. Right now, we don't have, we really can't let field through. We just gotta speed up because we got so many people put on the course, which is a good, which is exactly what we wanted. The new cards are here. This is our driving range and practice session. You can see that what it looked like when we first opened. I was sick on that first day because their top right, it just looks perfect. That was, nobody's hit on it in over a year, so it looks great. We redid the, the, um, the driving range. Mid-America helped us, but this was not in their package. We didn't pay them for it. They just helped out the car. And then we did this with Public Works, bought this concrete pad, and we put the, the mats on the back of, of the driving range that you can see there for people to hit up in. Surprisingly and happily, we have most people that prefer to hit up the mats because it's their progress, so it's, I'll prefer me to hit up the mats. So we have, we've had lots and lots of increase in the range pickup since we've opened the range, and everybody seems to like the mats. The putting green, if y'all have seen it, it's so much bigger. We've got eighteen holes out there, individual holes. You can play out that.
Cool.
That to the map to the right is kind of the map that we have. That's the program we have in, right there is a rusher. We have the tee sheet. Then they have another, a screen that they even set up for them today, and it has this map. And this is what shows the different cars on that, so they can look and see. The number, they'll have a whole box. They'll have the number. It'll show what number card is out there. We have a sheet when, when they sign in. Who's on, who's rented the carts, so we know exactly what group is playing based on the cart number they have, because we're assigning the cart numbers to, which we didn't do in the past. Now, people are more responsible for what happens if they have damaged carts. Public Works has helped us tremendously. If y'all notice, we had a lot of cart damage, uh, cart path damage, and it's mostly caused because of the Aurora, the ground moves, and it just breaks that concrete up. So what they've done is they've come in and looked at their bad areas, and they've been taking, they took out the bad areas, and now they're filling in with cart paths. And y'all put that last year's budget on, on, in the cart paths. Not in all of them. We're doing about five thousand linear feet of cart paths. So about a fourth of it. We're still in the process. We haven't finished, but that's it. And you can see the green in the back on there. Um, that's number twelve green. It looks really pretty green. And the, and the sand traps there look really nice. It really shine much more than the old sand trap. This is some of the, just the beautifications. Like I said, it's very important, the aesthetics of a golf course. Um, people like to see this. They'd like to see wildlife. This is the pond on fifteen. You can see the fountain. And then here's to the left of eleven, we've got Vogabilla's point in there. We've got some other areas that we're going to put Vogabilla patches to there so that, because they're very hardy-growing and they're very colorful like this. We've got the one big one. We've got seven small ones. They'll come up. The whole look I've got seen. And just some areas of color in contrast with the green that's out there in the trees. Everything's green. We're gonna have the colors there, so just to beautify the course very inexpensively. This was opening day tournament. We end up having forty teams, which is more than we had anticipated. And, um, that's because we had a lot of house sponsors. On the sales that day, we had fifteen thousand eight hundred dollars in sales. Once we've taken on our profit based on what we bought for the items that we gave away, what was our markup on our alcohol, what was our markup on, on, um, the gift certificates that we gave out. We ended net profit at eight thousand seven hundred fifty-six dollars that day. We had a hundred and twenty players play, play that day, and quite a few people came out and, and saw it going. And I think it went really well. I heard nothing but good things about the opening tournament. Um, we opened it up on November sixth. By eleven-thirty, November sixth, it was full. So there was no way to get into the tournament after that unless you bought a sponsorship and sponsored a home. And then by that, we let them in, so. But we had, we had a full, full proof. Um, revenues since we opened, this is kind of what we had said, or what I had told you we're going to have. This is ten days we did for fifty-four thousand dollars. We're looking mostly. The one day that takes us down is November twenty-eighth, Thanksgiving. We only opened it for half a day, and that's because we got winter Texans, and they're down here. They don't have a lot of family. They wanna play golf on Thanksgiving and Christmas. So we opened that morning, those mornings, and people come out and play. But we do close in the afternoons for people to go home and do what they need to do. But you can see, we are starting to get, this, November twenty-third, that really doesn't have tournament fees in. Most of the tournament fees were paid before the day of the twenty-third. Twenty-second hasn't tournament fees in, and twenty-third has just a few, but most of the tournament fees came in before that. But you can see that, um, these are numbers that can make the course profitable. I don't see a reason why, why we're not gonna continue to have these same type of numbers. The course is full. Uh, the tee sheets are, and were booked all the way till Christmas. It's very hard to get a tee time if you didn't. That's the, where we're sitting on the revenues. And that's where, everything is good. Like I said, we're not at the finish line. We're very, very far from the finish line. We just have a lot of labor to do to, can you get this course to go in, mature. We're gonna keep, um, pushing it by fertilization, top dressing greens, and tee boxes. And it's going in. It's coming right, right as long as scheduled. And by spring, we're gonna see, uh, even a prettier course to have now. And then in two years, you're gonna see even a better course, a more mature course than you have now. So everything is going good. That's the presentation, and I hope y'all like it. I know y'all been on a lot of, I hope y'all been out there and kind of see around it. It's better. It's much, much better. I'm sure that people have told you it's better to play it. It's much, much different. So, thank y'all for doing that, and we, it was done because y'all, you know, had the guts to go ahead and do this and say, let's get a good golf course. This is gonna, the residual effects of this golf course are really hard to measure because we're gonna have more of our winter Texans come back here. We're gonna have more people stay at the hotels. We're gonna have more people eating here, more people shopping here by having a good golf course, because they bring people to Harlingen. And that's the whole point, not the bottom line of the golf course, but what the golf course brings to Harlingen. Y'all have any questions?
Thanks, Jeff.
Okay, thanks.
Uh, one question. When are you gonna start having, uh, high school tournaments there?
Well, I just signed up three today, but it was LaFaria. Harlingen said they're coming in January, their schools are. But LaFarias are been practicing there. They signed up a district, um, and a pre-district and another tournament today. But they, February twenty-sixth, February nineteenth, and then one in March twenty-sixth and April nineteenth. They'll be this week. They'll be quiet.
Good deal. Thank you.
No problem.
Awesome.
Uh, next item, uh, number nine, public hearings. At this time, the mayor will invite members of the public who have filed, um, out the, uh, filled out the public hearing and the citizen communication form to address each item listed in this section. Please limit your comments to the topic of the public hearing. If more than one public hearing is being held, you will be allowed to speak during each topic, provided you have filled out the public hearing and citizen communication form for the appropriate topic. If you are signed up for two more, two or more public hearings, you will be limited to five minutes for all topics. Mayor, I have no, no one signed up for public hearings.
Okay. We've got item nine A, public hearing for the voluntary annexation of a two-point-two-seven-three acre tract of land out of the extreme northwest corner of block one-seventy-six, Adams Garden subdivision C, located at the southeast corner of Bass Boulevard, FM eight-hundred, and Palace Drive, including all of the existing right-of-way along Bass Boulevard, FM eight-hundred, from the intersection with Palace Drive to the intersection with Hick Hill Road. This time, we'll open the public hearing for item nine A. Having no one here to speak for or against, or anyone signed up, we will close the public hearing at this time, and we will close public hearings. Moving on.
Okay. Um, item number ten, action items. City commission will discuss, consider, and take any action deemed necessary on items listed in this section, including the adoption of a resolution or an ordinance. Ordinances, ten A, consideration and possible action to approve an ordinance on second and final reading for the voluntary annexation of a two-point-two-seven-three acre tract of land out of the extreme northwest corner of block one-seventy-six, Adams Garden, uh, Garden subdivision C, located at the southeast corner of Bass Boulevard, FM eight-hundred, and Pal- Palace Drive, including all of the existing right-of-way along Bass Boulevard, FM eight-hundred, from the intersection with Palace Drive to the intersection with Hick Hills Road. Applicant LS Contractors, Specialist, Specialist, Inc., in care of ACE Engineering LLC. Planning and zoning.
Marv, if you'll read the caption.
An ordinance extending the corporate limits of the city of Harlingen by annexing for full purpose the two-point-two-seven-three acre tract of land out of the extreme northwest corner of block one-seventy-six, Adams Garden subdivision C, located at the southeast corner of Bass Boulevard, FM eight-hundred, and Palace Drive, including all of the existing right-of-way along Bass Boulevard, FM eight-hundred, from the intersection with Palace Drive to the intersection with Hick Hill Road, binding the land to all of the acts, ordinances, resolutions, and resolutions of the city, approving an annexation services agreement, providing for severability, and providing an effective date.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, item ten B, consideration and possible action to adopt an ordinance on second and final reading amending the city of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, chapter one-eleven, zoning, article twelve, special use regulations and restrictions to establish section one-eleven dash three-thirty-six car wash establishments by establishing a two-mile radius and distance requirement, ensuring no new car wash business be established within a two-mile radius of an existing car wash due to the drought conditions. Applicant city of Harlingen planning and zoning.
An ordinance amending the city of Harlingen Code of Ordinances, chapter one-eleven, zoning, article twelve, special use regulations and restrictions to establish section one-eleven-three-thirty-six car wash establishments by establishing a two-mile radius and distance requirement, ensuring no new car wash businesses be established within the two-mile radius of an existing car wash, providing for publication and ordaining other matters related to the foregoing.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion approved, subject to legal.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Opposed.
Motion carries.
Item C, uh, consideration and possible action to approve the Harlingen Animal Shelter facility to close an additional day, Monday, to the public to allow the continued effort of disinfecting the shelter to prevent the spread of, of more diseases and give efficient time to the rescues and foster homes to come and pick up animals.
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Shannon. Thank you.
Okay. Uh, D, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution accepting the Federal Aviation Administration, FAA, anticipated grant offer, number three forty-eight zero-one zero-one zero-seven-nine-two-zero-two-four for five million dollars for the air, air traffic control tower project at Valley International Airport attachment.
Is there a motion?
Approved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
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 Opposed? Motion carries. Thanks, Marv. And Gabe, can we put these on consent, so?
Yes, we can do that.
Okay, great. Thank you. Moving on.
Okay, and then, uh, item E, uh, consideration and possible action to approve a request from Remy Garza, Cameron County Elections Administrator, to use the following locations as early voting sites for the December fourteenth, twenty-twenty-four special runoff election. Um, the locations are, uh, Cultural Arts Center, five-seven-
Amanda, the mayor asked for a motion.
Is there a motion to?
The mayor asked for a motion.
Oh, I'm so sorry.
Second, or motion, I'm sorry.
Wait, wait, wait.
We got a motion?
What are we making a motion and seconding on?
We talked about this at the last hearing. It's to, for the election day, um, locations.
Okay.
Cultural Arts Center.
I thought we were, I don't see UTRGV in here.
This is for early voting, is what the agenda item says.
Yeah, the, um, UTRGV is for election day, sir.
That's why I said, we already did this. I don't know why it's back on again, but.
Yeah, I mean, we, we already voted on this.
We did this at the last meeting, so I didn't know if you needed it twice or what the, so.
I think at the last meeting, mayor, it was only mentioned, but it wasn't requested by the county, and this time they're requesting it.
Ex post facto. I sound like a lawyer now.
All right, for good measure, is there, is there, is there a motion to approve this?
Motion.
Okay, and for the record, Daniel has, uh, abstained. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Not gonna hurt anything, my, moving on.
Item F, consideration and possible action to approve the planning and construction of a pocket park within Gala Park subdivision, utilizing the abandoned Bonita Road, uh, right-of-way, and dedicating funding for the construction. Pardon my crease.
Question, what's it gonna cost?
So, we've come up with a couple of cost estimates. Um, we have met with, um, John Piercy. He's offered his assistance, and so our estimate is thirty thousand seven hundred thirty-five. Of course, that can change. That can go, you know, up or, or down, just depending on what we wanna do. And for example, like if we, if we build parking spaces, or we don't, then we would reduce that uh, by about twenty-five hundred dollars. We wanna put some native trees.
And native trees and brush?
I'm sorry?
Native trees and brush?
Yes.
Excellent.
Yeah, so currently, they have, uh, it's full of ebony trees. Um, and so we wanna build a trail, uh, to the back of the property, and then maybe build a- And so, we wanna build a trail, uh, to the back of the property and then maybe build a, a concrete slab, build a pergola where, where, uh, you know, people can go out there and just relax. And then in the back is where we wanna build that butterfly garden. But again, if we don't build the parking spaces, which John Piercy was maybe recommending not to, he was suggesting that it be a, a walkable park or a bicycle park where you bike, you know, you bike to it or you walk to it. And then, so that would eliminate that cost.
Okay, I'll make a motion to approve.
Real quick. I just wanna, I'm really proud of staff on this one. This was a direct product of the neighborhood revitalization program. Uh, this was, uh, we did our first walk. We identified this, uh, piece of land in District Two. Uh, and we figured out ways to do it, uh, inexpensively. So I want to thank staff. We talked about making it, uh, low maintenance, 'cause I know we ask a lot of their times and their resources. The one thing I did ask for staff to consider, including here, is a table or two, uh, concrete tables that are used to play chess, like you see in New York City, things like that, so that we can have students go out there to play and then they're in like a zen garden themselves. So, I'd ask that we just give a approval for one or two of those tables, uh, as staff sees necessary.
I think this is incredible and I know that the, the vision for the commission is to ensure that every neighborhood is connected to a park, um, as close as possible. And so, I think it's wonderful. It's great for the district, great for the community and kudos to the staff for keeping this within a very, very reasonable budget. I think, um, the cost, um, you know, the benefits outweigh that this cost is minimal when you really look at what it can contribute to that, uh, community. So, great work for everyone.
On top of this, what I did ask staff to do is, the reason we were able to identify this parcel of land is 'cause one of the neighbors appointed it up to, Mr. Medina, who you've met, right? Uh, I've asked, what this piece of land was supposed to be was an extension of Bonita Road. So I've asked staff to identify land, all of our land in all of our districts, so, so we can look at seeing if there's other roads that were gonna be created but are no longer created. And we can create pocket parks in each district and try to find them in each neighborhood so that we can expand this, uh, beautification process. So, we're working on that as well.
I think that's great. And your idea of, of making them, um, bike accessible is, encourages more health and wellness and getting, getting people out and off their devices and out of the house and especially the kiddos. It's good. I hadn't heard about those chess. I'll have to look that up, but that sounds interesting.
Anytime, like if you see the movie Independence Day, like the dad is playing chess in the park in New York City and that's kind of what they do. And so, I know that surprisingly, because of Commissioner Betts bringing all those kids from the different schools and that we have so many like chess teams in the town, I think this was just like a, an, the low-hanging fruit that we can just, uh, tag on.
That's awesome. All right, so we got a motion and a second.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Motion carries.
Uh, item G, consideration and possible action to authorize the city manager to begin negotiations with a semi-pro soccer club and to execute an agreement for the use of Harlingen Field for their summer season games. Pardon recreation.
Good evening, mayor. Uh, city commission, um, Javier Mendez, park director for the record. Um, this item here, um, uh, we were approached by an organization that is interested in bringing a, um, a semi-pro soccer club to, to Harlingen and more particularly the, um, Harlingen Field. And so, we're excited because the, the, the facility, you know, has been dormant, you know, nobody's, you know, used it except for our special events. And so, when they approached us, you know, it kind of lighted up, um, our eyes and, you know, we were excited. Uh, hopefully we can, we can work something out. Uh, we met with, with Colby, who's a representative of the organization that's bringing the soccer club to Harlingen. And so, we would just like to get, uh, authorization, of course, to move forward, uh, and negotiate a, uh, an agreement. There's a presentation that, um, he would like to show and, and maybe if y'all have any questions for him, um, we can, um, we can answer those. Uh, just one of the things that, that I wanna bring up is, there has to be some, uh, renovation to the facility just because it's been, uh, sitting there for so long. Um, we've come up with an estimate about thirty-nine thousand. Uh, that's to fix the, the, the AC in the back and the field room, which is a changing station for the players. And then the AC for the office, um, that also includes ceiling tiles, the window replacement, and then some irrigation repairs. So, total of thirty-nine thousand eight hundred is what we'd have to put into the facility to bring it to, uh, to their standards, what they would need. Now, the, the scoreboard does not work. Um, now, they said they would, they would bring something in to use, uh, for that. But the PA, the audio, everything works. Um, we, with Public Works, we cleaned out all the seats, the stadium seating. And then, of course, aluminum, uh, seating that's, that's on third base. Those are aluminum and so we've inspected those. Uh, they look fine. We walked it. Everything was, was good on those, so. Anyway, I can bring up, uh, Colby, uh, in case y'all have any questions and then we can go through the presentation.
Is there, is this a, uh, nonprofit or profit organization?
Profit.
Okay, and so, um, are you already incorporated?
Not yet.
Okay, and then, uh...
So we'll have, um, Colby come up to the mic.
Okay.
So that you can go through your presentation. And you want him to go through there and then?
No, not, this is other business questions. Uh, insurance? You have liability insurance?
So the league provides, um, an insurance. The league is a, uh, third division US soccer, um, in the US soccer pyramid, so they provide some insurance, uh, for the players. In a semi-pro environment, uh, we're not fully responsible for the insurance of the, of the players, as long as they're not getting paid.
Answers, answers my questions.
Um, yeah, so I mean, the presentation's a lot of basic idea of what the club can bring to a community. You know, more than anything, I think it's kind of appropriate that we came, my first time doing anything like this in a museum because the whole idea came about celebrating the history of Harlingen Field. I live here. I worked for a professional soccer team, uh, for a few years. And I just see an opportunity, um, to bring pride back to our community, to bring the people together where, whether you're a Longhorn or an Aggie, whether in both.
Or, or, or a better school than those.
Play Switzerland there, all right, so. With that being said, uh, the reason we're not incorporated yet is because this field to me means everything. If I don't have this field, it's not worth going for. I've, uh, I've, I've talked to some of my, my old peers and they've told me the quickest way to make a million dollars in lower league soccer is you start with five million and just watch your money dwindle down. So I'm not doing this for money, so to speak. I'm doing this to bring back, bring, bring back memories of White Wing Stadium, something for kids to do. I was one of the two-hundred-and-seventy that voted yesterday. And, uh, while voting, I, I thought of, especially Mayor Norma's, um, campaign and how you mentioned making a Harlingen that you want your kids to stay. Well, I had that dream too, more so for me, for a young thirty-some-year-old professional. I'd, I'd like stuff to do. I'm a season ticket holder for UTRGV football. Looking to get my seats? That's in Edinburgh. I'm a RGV Viper season ticket holder. That's in Edinburgh. You see a trend. Um, so I'm hoping to bring something where we can have season ticket holders that will come here, support our businesses, support our economy, support our hotels. Um, and so, yeah, for me, if I don't have this stadium that we can celebrate, that we can tell a story, then it's not really worth it. So, that's why we're not incorporated yet. Um, we just, the, the presentation. Um, just talks about our mission statement, um, and I won't bore you all through it. I'm not as handsome as, uh, Mr. Cinnamon, so I know you probably don't wanna see me up here. Um, but basically creating something that we can support, support and be prideful of our, of our community. For me, uh, again, I started working in professional soccer because the Toros came into town. Had it not been for a professional soccer team being in Edinburgh, I probably wouldn't have been able to live through my childhood dream of working in professional sports. So we're hoping to provide that for kids here that wanna work, whether it's the front office, whether it's marketing, whether it's sales, uh, whether it's training on the field. We wanna be able to provide that so that it can either realize that this isn't for me or hey, there is something here and we can help them, um, in their path into working in a more professional environment. Talks about all the opportunities, sales, game day operations, marketing, public relations. Basically, what I just told you guys, the memories of Harlingen Field. Now, the reason soccer, uh, one, I'm familiar with it, two, um, as you may or may not know, minor league baseball as a whole got bought out by the majors. So unless major league baseball wants to be in your community, I don't see them wanting to come to the valley. They have a really good thing going in Corpus. Um, soccer is the easiest to get into. Soccer's a much popular with Gen Z and the age groups younger. No cap, as a kid say, um, no lies there. Uh, but the idea is...
Thank you for the translation, 'cause I would not even understand that. Apparently it means no lies.
No lies, I have no lies.
Oh, he's being honest. Okay.
Uh, that's the Gen Z talk. And so, long story short, um, this would be the easiest avenue to get into a professional environment. Um, what I love about our league is that it also works with the WPSL, which is a women's professional soccer league. Me personally, five-year plan would be to also bring in a women's team that we could, um, help for our, our female players. And yeah, just talks about the versatility of the grounds. What I love about this league is that it runs through the summer. I know the only summer event we really have is the, the Freedom Fest or the, the fireworks. So we can be very lenient in working around you guys or working with us as well. Uh, but the other idea is that soccer, it's a flat, big piece of grass. So that allows for more events, nicer seating areas. Um, I've been to some events, Beer Fest, I got attacked by some ants. Doesn't either here nor there. So this would, you know, help us as well for our other events in the city. And, you know, just something to help with the local youth soccer programs. One thing I wanna emphasize because I felt like this hurt us with the Toros, we're not in the youth soccer business. I don't have any kids myself. I don't wanna work with your kids, no offense. We just, we're in the professional environment. We wanna provide an opportunity for kids to come celebrate this team. We wanna work with youth programs to celebrate them and all the great things they do for our community. Us, our brand, we are not in youth sports. So, gotta, gotta emphasize that. But with that being said, we can bring those, those teams to be ball boys, to walk along the players and to have that professional game day experience that you would have on North and Houston or Dallas. And that's about it. So any questions, anything?
What does the field look like?
Um...
Currently? Is it gonna need a lot of work, a little work, no work?
It's in much better shape than I thought. The only work that I would see was where the diamond was. There's a little divot, just flattening that out. But, um, it's in much better shape surprisingly than, than I was anticipating.
What happened to the Toros?
So, um, long story short, uh, there was an opportunity with UTRGV getting a football team where it would've been more lucrative to sell that stadium for the football team. And so, when they took it, they're gonna put artificial turf there. I don't know if you've seen the change in the stadium they're doing. It didn't really work out for them to have a soccer team and a football team. So, um, stadium went to UTRGV and it's gonna be specifically, solely college football.
And the Toros?
Just, uh, dissolved.
Dissolved. And I know Brownsville also tried to bring in a team. Remember reading about it a couple of years ago?
Yeah.
And that team, what happened to that team?
They're, they're around. So, um, that's Brownsville FC. Back to my other point, Brownsville FC's in the youth sports business as well. So, um, while they do have a semi-pro team, they're more focused on the youth sports avenue of it. We're more so focused on the game day. What I like to tell people, I guess the easiest way to put it is, and don't tell this to the soccer fan, but the soccer actually comes second. What comes primary is event night, something to do on a June, July night here in Harlingen. The soccer, the developing players, that's secondary. We're not a professional team where we make our money selling players. We make our money by selling concessions, selling jerseys, selling tickets. So, um, FC Brownsville is around, um, but they, they have a different business model than what we're looking at.
And this is just for the summer, right? So how many games does that translate to?
So there's five home games, five away games. Um, our conference so far looks like Austin, San Antonio, Houston, hopefully us. And, um, season starts in late May and ends by late July, if we make the playoffs early August. But typically with the playoffs, to make the travel easier on the teams, they, um, they do it regionally. So either teams can come down here and play or we would go up to Houston or Austin. Um, another part of our contract agreement with the league, whenever we do have a visiting team, us as a home team have to provide at least eight hotels for that team, um, as well as a team dinner. So, um, another way to kind of boost the economy in hotels.
To find hotels.
I'm sorry. What day of the week traditionally do y'all play? Saturday?
Saturday nights typically. We have, being that it's the valley and Saturday at seven is not the most pleasant time, we have the ability to go even later. If it makes sense, we can play seven-thirty, eight o'clock. So we have flexibility in doing that.
When you say you have to provide eight hotels?
Hotel rooms.
Hotel rooms.
Yeah, excuse me.
And so have you had any conversations with the hoteliers in our community about this project?
All of them. And they jaws dropped, excited. Um, so I've, uh, actually, Fairfield Inn, Herbin, was one of my sponsors with the Toros. Um, I helped, um, bring up that relationship. And once he came into town, it was like, just perfect, perfect timing for both of us. So he's familiar with what a relationship looks like, what he would have to provide and what our expectations would be. Um, that's just one of the, um, hotel owners, but I was able to meet with a bunch of them. They were really excited with the opportunity. Um, they keep talking about a softball tournament, I guess, that happened years ago. And, um, reiterate that they wanted to work with, with sports, that it just brings in a lot of folks, so.
You know, uh, on a separate note for the commission, Gabe and I were at a TML EDC conference about a couple of weeks ago. And something that they pitched that I, I thought was fantastic and I'm working with staff on is that when we do facility rentals to offer a discount if they are gonna use hotel rooms and get hotel blocks. So this goes right in, it dovetails with that. And so, uh, I would like some provision in the contract, so the use contract, that goes to that. Obviously, he already has to do it anyways, so just make sure.
I think it's a great idea. And I know from our meeting that we had last time, um, with the board, with the CVV board and talking about all the opportunities and opportunities, I think, left up on the table over years of not really developing, um, you know, events like these that can lead towards in the future where we can be backing them and promoting them with those funds. But there had to be a certain amount of games and you had to have a history and so you had to start somewhere. And so this is a, this is a good starting, a starting point. And so, you know, trying it out for the, for the summer and, and committing five days, I think, to this organization is, is, seems like a no-brainer in, in my view. Um, and hopefully it's successful and then we can continue and, and move forward. And staff seems to be excited about it too, so.
There's a, you know, lower division soccer's weird. There's pockets in the US where it thrives. Annapolis, for, for example, they're getting eighteen thousand a game and it's the same division as we're in. My theory is people only take it as professional as you take yourself. I take myself very professional with this project, so I'm anticipating doing great things. We've already talked to local business owners about sponsorships, trades, doing cool events with one another. Something we launched today, rgvprosoccer.com. The best running teams started out in a grassroots mentality. So, um, I advise, or I would love for all of you all to check out rgvprosoccer.com. There's a tab to click where you can let your voice be heard on what you think color should be, what do you think mascot should be, what are you looking at to get out of a game day experience? Basically, I want the community to feel a part of the process before we drop a logo, before we drop a name. Um, I really want this to be the community's club. And so, we launched that, um, in hopes to, to get everyone's voice.
Orange and green, they somehow go together.
That's weird. You know, the last time I was in that stadium...
Orange and green?
Yeah, orange and green, on a way.
Last time I was in that stadium, there was an orange and green team that went on the state in two thousand and seven, so. Manifesting some great things happened.
What's the name of the league?
Uh, so it's third division US, uh, US soccer. It's the League FC. Just like in Spain, Spain's La Liga, this is the league.
Awesome. All right, are there any other questions?
I was gonna say, I think it's great, 'cause it's a great facility that was in danger of becoming an eyesore. Well on its way to it and amen. Well done.
It's crazy what y'all have already done with that trail around. Everything's looking great. And when I show the other owners of, of clubs in that league, they're just like, you have this. Just sitting there, like jump at this, this is amazing. I mean, overnight, I think we'd have one of the better home day experiences just because of what we have, the park, um, and a place that we can call home. We're not renting out a high school stadium or something like that, so. Commend you guys too for fixing all that place up. I, I love that part of town.
Awesome. I knew you...
Motion approved.
Second.
All right, so we got, um, a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Well, success to you.
Item H, consideration and possible action to approve a resolution authorizing the transfer of real property to the Lower Rio Grande... of real property to the Lower Rio Grande Valley Development Council City Manager.
Your motion?
Um, this one, just gave, there's a church right behind this piece of property.
Mm-hmm. It's actually to the side, at the corner?
No, no, right behind it, on O Street.
O Street, okay.
Pastor Danny Garza was there. I can show it to you later, but anyways, all I ask is that whenever this is built, that it make sure that we get no flooding in that area. That area, like the waters are pushing back towards that church.
Okay.
So whenever we built this bust depot, we had, now, we put something in this, this transfer that they say that they are cognizant of that.
When, when they come in for a building permit, and I say when they, because once we transfer it to Valimetro, it'll be them applying for, for the, the building permit. When they come in, we'll have to approve, and that'll be done through Luis, the drainage plan for that site, until we can, we can look at that. If you could just show me later where.
I can show it to Luis like thirty minutes.
Okay. You said it's right behind the site?
Yeah, I'll show it to you.
Okay.
Motion approved.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Aye, opposed, motion carries. Thank you, Manny. There you go.
Item eleven, board appointments.
I've done.
None.
None.
Okay, uh, none, but may I bring something up after this?
None. None.
All right. Having none, um.
Okay, yes. I got a request late this afternoon. I forwarded it to the police department and to Oscar and the other city managers about a speed bump in Treasure Hills. And when I walked in, Oscar told me I should bring this up.
Oh, all right. So, will you write that, write that down?
There we go.
Okay.
Yeah, yeah, he's got all the data and all that, but formally, he asked me to request.
Yes. Yeah, he's a good guy. He'll make sure to take care of it. Put it on the list, Oscar. Okay, moving on.
Item twelve.
No, there's no item. It's just a comment.
Item twelve, executive session. All items, all items listed in this section will be deliberated in a closed session. Members of the public are not generally permitted to attend a closed session. Executive session items may be considered as an action item at the direction of the mayor. However, city commission will not take any action in closed session. Item A, discussion and/or possible action approving the highest bid received on the following property struck off to Cameron County for itself and other taxing jurisdictions from a tax resale conducted on November fifth, twenty twenty-four. Item one, A one, legal description, the west one half of South ninety-one fifty feet, ninety-one point fifty feet of Lot one, Block forty-three, City of Harlingen, Cameron County, Texas, as described in cost number forty-two, one twenty-three A, District Court records of Cameron County, Texas, account number one, five, zero, 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 four, three, zero, 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 one, two, zero, zero. Item A two, legal description, the east one half of South ninety-one point fifty feet of Lot one, Block forty-three, City of Harlingen, Cameron County, Texas, as described in cost number forty-two, one twenty-three dash A, District Court records of Cameron County, Texas, account number one, five, zero, 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 four, three, zero, 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 one, one, zero. Item A three, legal description, Lot twenty-eight, Block two, Charleston addition, in addition to the City of Harlingen, Cameron County, Texas, as described in volume six, one, five, page one, six, two, deed records of Cameron County, Texas, account number one, six, four, one, one, zero, 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 two, zero, zero, two, eight, zero, zero, zero. Item twelve, A four, legal description, Lot four, Block one, Bonneville Terrace subdivision, a subdivision in the City of Harlingen, Cameron County, Texas, according to, to the map or plat thereof, recorded in volume eighteen, page one thirty-seven, map records of Cameron County, Texas, save and accept, however, that certain zero point zero one zero track, acre tract described in volume twenty-eight, page three, twenty-nine, official records of Cameron County, Texas, leaving here a residue of zero, one, six, zero, seven acre, more or less, account number nine, seven, one, two, two, zero, 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 five, zero, 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 four, zero, zero, zero. Item B, consultation with legal attorney pursuant to Texas Government Code five, five, one, point, zero, seven, one, two, to receive confidential legal opinion from city attorney protected by the attorney-client communications privilege and attorney-client work product privilege.
Is there a motion to go into executive?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. The time is now six forty-nine PM, and we will retire to executive session and be out shortly. Thank you. The time is now seven twenty-four PM, and we are back in open session.
Item thirteen, action on this executive session items. The city commission will reconvene in open session and may take action on any item listed in the executive session of this agenda. Item thirteen A, consideration and possible action on item number twelve A, one, two, one, two, three, and four, as discussed in executive session. Item B.
Okay, it's due thirteen A. Is there a motion to approve as discussed in executive session?
Some move.
Second.
All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries.
Item thirteen B, discussion and possible action to approve an ordinance on first reading amending Harlingen City Court of Ordinances, Article two, Valley International Airport Division one, generally section eight dash twenty-five Airport Operations Manual, and adopting Article two, Valley International Airport Division one, section eight dash twenty-five Airport Certification Manual.
Is there a motion to approve?
Motion.
Are, do, okay, so do you need to read an ordinance or?
Yeah, in order to the City of Harlingen, Texas, amending the Harlingen Court of Ordinances article two, Valley International Airport Division one, generally section eight dash twenty-five Airport Operations Manual, and adopting Article two, Valley International Airport Division one, section eight point two-five Airport Certification Manual.
All right, is there a motion to approve?
Motion, yes.
How about a second? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, motion carries. And that is all. Ladies and gentlemen, we are adjourned. Thank you.